I'm Bob Moeller, I'm the President of your FCHOA. And first, I want to thank you for joining us. Traditionally, we would be gathering at the S&amp;T to go over this presentation for Budget Town Hall meeting, but given the COVID restrictions and the requirement to stay six feet separated, we can only fit about 50 to 60 people in the S&amp;T. Thus, the reason for using this alternative, which we think can get out to the most people, more than 60. Second, we ask for your patience as we go through this. This is a learning process for us. This is our second Town Hall meeting. Our first one with the supervisors went well, but we had some technical issues. So hopefully, we'll be able to have fixed those. And we thank you for your patience. Our Treasurer, Ray Van Cott, has videotaped his presentation and it's up on YouTube. It's on the web and it's a YouTube video. And we've already had about 308 views of that. So I think if you haven't seen it, I'd recommend it to you. It's a great job. Ray did a wonderful job. We've asked for and received questions. We've got 20 some odd questions that we've received by email. We'll be taking more questions as the night goes on. And you can do that by our preferred method is you use the chat room that's available in the GoToWebinar. And Drew will explain how you get to the chat room. If that doesn't work, because you don't have a computer or whatever, if you have a smartphone, there's a telephone number that you can use to text messages and that's 757-378-8037. And failing everything else, you can call the admin building at 757-258-4230. We have staff standing by that they can take your questions. Again, welcome and thank you for joining us. And I want to wish a happy Veterans Day tomorrow to all our veterans and their families and thank them for their service. Without further ado, I give you Ray Van Cott, our Treasurer.
Thank you very much, Bob. Folks, I'm looking at about 24 questions that were submitted. Correctly, most of them came in today and yesterday. I originally intended on identifying the individual who sent the question, going through the question, and then give my answer. But there is an awful lot of duplicity in the questions. So I decided not to do that. I'll basically go from question to question. And some of them I've combined because more than one person has asked that. But I will cover everything that I have received. First of all, I want to thank you for the 300-plus people who've looked at the video. As I mentioned to Drew, I do have to check with my kids. I don't know anything about YouTube. I don't know what constitutes going viral, but a budget presentation that gets 300, I think, is viral. I want to personally thank the two people who gave me the thumbs up. And I don't take personally the person who gave me, the one person who gave me his thumbs down. So with that as a start, let me launch into the questions in really no particular order here. First question, are there any assumptions in the budget for the potential new building, new residents, new fees in the multifamily project that Brian Ford has developing? This is the project that we passed on to the residents as we knew in a What's Happening in Forts Colony and involves multifamily units up by the Marriott. So the question is, did we take any of that into consideration in the assumptions in developing the 2021 budget? The answer to that is shortly no. The project, as it was announced to us, was a pre-announcement. To the best of my knowledge, there has been nothing filed with James City County. And the filing and approval process of a project like this is not a short undertaking. So there's going to be some time involved from the start that it's submitted to the end. So we really didn't have any idea when this project would get anywhere near having the first bulldozer come in to dig a trench. So because of that, we thought it prudent not to include anything financially in the 2021 budget for that project. Moving on, we have a question on the drainage pipes. This question starts and says, "The repair replacement of the drainage pipes is expected to last 50 years. Why are only current Forts Colony residents expected to pay for it? Did we consider taking on any long-term debt to be paid in the future because of the record-low interest rates?" So the short answer to that is, we did look at the debt instruments. We did not want to take on anything where we would be paying interest externally, even though the interest rates are historically low and we know they are. It is still, we would still be 3%, 4%, maybe even 5% for something that we could only secure by what was in the ground. And we just didn't want to take that on. However, to the person who said, who asked this, the project will be paid not by current residents, but also by future residents. And here's what I mean by that. The two special assessments that we've asked for last year and this year's really are going to net us roughly $1.8 million. If you recall in my presentation, we said that the new total project is looking at now at $3.4 million. So roughly half of that is covered in the special assessment. We're using the special assessments to take care of critical pipes. These are pipes that are right now prone to failure. And if they fail, it's going to cost us a heck of a lot more money. The remaining pipes, which is another $1.7 million, are going to be done over time. And we put aside money in our budgets through 2029, which will be funded each year as we move down toward 2029. So if you're not here now and you're not paying the special assessment, but somebody moves in in 2027, they're going to be paying for the pipe project at that time, their portion of it. So it's both a combination of the special assessments and the money that we put aside for savings. Next question. "I noted a 10% increase in employee benefit expense, which on the surface seems to be a lot for one year. Can you please explain this a little bit more?" Well, first of all, it's 10% this year. Last year's actually, the estimate was 12%. But understand that we don't have our policies renewed or know exactly who we're providing insurance for at the beginning of each year when we're doing our budget planning. So we go through our broker and go to our insurance companies and basically get planning guidance for the forthcoming year, which is what we did too. During the execution of the year, let's take like 2020, how many people sign up for it? The staff doesn't all participate in our insurance plans because they may get it through a spout or somewhere else. When we get through and we're paying the actual premiums, then we will be in a situation where we know that we have the actual funds. This year, as in previous years, we received refunds on our insurance. This year, we received $10,000, which returned to us because we didn't have that many people to insure. So the short answer is, we receive planning guidance from our insurance companies, which we build in the budget, but actual can be much less, depending on the level of participation and the eventual race that we get when these policies come up to render. I'm just going to keep rolling here as I have my list. The next question, an individual asked to see maps detailing the pipe failures and where we're going to be doing our pipe relining and pipe replacements. And I asked if he could see the maps. The maps for our replacement of pipes are currently under development and should be up and available starting at the end of December. They will be by section. So by Forts Colony's section, that means Red Berkshire may be up before St. Andrews. But we're putting them up by section in the type of, based on the sections that we're going out to bid on. So we will have pipes, pipe maps of the repair work. We will make them available on the Forts Colony Homeowners website when they come up and when they're done. Another question on the pipes funding. I mentioned that in the funding for the current project, we were going to be borrowing from ourselves at the Capital Reserve several hundred thousand dollars. The question asks, "How would that be paid back?" And we're going to basically charge ourselves interest. All right, so we have committed to fund each year for pipes repair. We're taking some of that money out of our reserves and sort of advancing it against ourselves. That's probably the best way to say it. So we put aside last year roughly $190,000 per year through 2029. Now, that number will change because of inflation and the way the project goes, but let's just stay with that number because it's easy math to at least to think through. We're going to borrow in 2021 the $190,000 from 2022 and some of 2023. And use that to pay for the pipe repairs in 2021. When 2022 comes along, we're putting the $190,000 that we've already committed into the reserve fund and therefore repaying that which we've borrowed against ourselves. Just like we mentioned, we had a policy where we don't like to go out and deal with long-term debt and pay one interest. We also don't feel compelled that we should pay ourselves interest for a borrowing charge. So we're not addressing taking any interest for ourselves. Give me a second here. Next question. "How do our current dues at Forts Colony compare with dues assessed in our neighborhood other areas such as Governor's Land, Kingsmill, and I threw in Colonial Heritage?" Our dues are going up to $495. And we'll talk about that maybe a little later. Currently, Kingsmill is at $549. Governor's Land without mandatory club dues. Remember, Governor's Land has not only an HOA, but it requires membership in the club. If you back out the club dues, Governor's Land is standing at $714 per quarter. And we just checked on Colonial Heritage and Colonial Heritage is at $840 per quarter. So between all of the areas around us, even with our increase, we remain the cheapest. Next question, I was asked, "What is the approximate dollar amount in the Capital Reserve Fund?" The balance of the Capital Reserve Fund ebbs and flows every month. As of September 30th, which is the last financial statement that we have audited, we'll see October next week, is $843,277. Money moves in, such like when we have the fourth quarter assessments date, money will be placed into the Capital Reserve Fund. As we spend money on repairs or replacements of capital assets, money will come out of the Capital Reserve Fund. But the answer is as of September 30th, $843,277. We had a request for a list of additions and expenditures in the funds for 2021 and 2020. I'm going to defer on that only because there are right now 660-plus items in the Capital Reserve Fund that we monitor in our model. On any given month, we can be doing repair work or purchase work against those. And we do keep a list of what those expenditures are and we take it from Capital Reserve, but this will be a rather lengthy list and we don't keep a consolidated list. If I had a consolidated list, I'd go ahead and return it over. But to go ahead and go into each month's list of expenditures, which by the way are audited, and detail them out into a wall list, I'm not sure what you would get out of that. And the person who asked this, we can have a conversation on this after he reads my response and decide if there's anything else we can do. There are. We do keep a list of major items, major equipment items, and when those come for replenishment and we do have that for 2021. But I'm not sure that answers the need of this particular question. "Given the assessment for the pipes coupled with the increase in dues, it seems to me the board should be looking for more ways to reduce spending. Increase of spending in grounds maintenance, one case in point. Can it not suffice with reduced scheduling of leaf blowing?" All right, so we're very cognizant of the expenses. We know where our money comes from. It comes, and it comes from myself as well as the residents here. And these are not monies that we just, that are extraneous to us. We take pride in where we live and we know we have budget constraints. But the number one item that continually comes up on satisfaction surveys from our residents is the quality and appearance of Forts Colony and the importance of the quality and appearance of Forts Colony. We are not going to put ourselves in position until the residents say, hey, you can cut down on that and save on maintenance and landscaping and leaf blowing and to save some money. We're just not going to do that and look at the number one area of satisfaction to our residents and start cutting there. And I think that when you drive through Forts Colony for the first time or the thousandth time, you cannot help but be struck by the way the colony appears. It looks beautiful. And we have a wonderful staff that works to keep it that way. We have a committee and a subcommittee, the Roads and Project Management Committee and the Landscaping Committee, who have dedicated all their hours to making sure that Forts Colony remains a premier community. And frankly, we have to support that as a board. And right now, that won't be accomplished by cutting our landscaping, any of our landscaping Your presentation states that the total project cost, and again, we're talking about pipes, increased $200,000 in 2020 versus the expected cost of the project in 2019. Can you please explain why you need another special assessment of almost three times that much for $597,600? I ask you to go back and go through the presentation with maybe a little more of a critical eye. The presentation mentioned that last year, 2019, our project estimate was roughly $3.15 million based on the visual inspection of 41% of our total pipes. The board passed a special assessment in 2020 to begin repairs, but foremost, to complete those inspections. In other words, inspect the remaining 59% and understand the totality of our project. That special assessment, which we took in, brought in $1.195 million. The remaining part of the $3.15 million project was to be accomplished over 10 years and the board established a savings plan of $190,000 per year to finish the job. In 2020, we finished inspecting the remaining 59% of our pipes and discovered two things. More pipe was close to failure and two, the project cost had increased $200,000 because of the complexity of the repairs. As I mentioned in my presentation, we need to address the critical pipes now. If we don't, the critical pipes can do two things. A critical pipe that we have to reline can continue deteriorate where it has to be replaced. And that's more money. A pipe that is critical, that needs to be replaced, can fail. And if it fails, that's a tremendous amount of more money. So we want to address those pipes now. And if you saw my presentation, the amount of handling the critical pipes is roughly $1.99 million after a discount that we were given by the vendor. To fund this, we're taking the remaining $809,000 from the $1.195 million of 2020. We have $809,000 left. We're adding the savings from borrowing ourselves and we've asked for another special assessment. So I don't, I think the writer is just a little bit confused of the $200,000 cost. The $200,000 cost was $3.15 to about $3.4 million. It was not something that was covered completely by the special assessment. So I hope by going through that breakout, if you refer back to the presentation where I take you through that, it all makes sense. Hang on, I'm getting to switching pages for the next question. "Please give us specific details of how the money was spent and who received funds from our HOA fees for the drainage. It seems like no progress was made this year." And I would start by saying, that's really not a fair conclusion of exactly what happened this year. In 2019, we said 2020, we would first and foremost finish the visual inspection of all our pipes. We would take the 41% that we, you know, we basically extrapolated. We had data on 41% of our pipes being visually inspected. We extrapolated that data to what it would look like if the same percentage is held true at 100%. And that's where the project started. The only, the number one thing, and we all agreed and we covered it a lot in last year's Town Hall, the number one thing was to finish inspection of the 59%, which by the way, we did do. We did expect back in 2019 to have that inspection done in the early part of the summer. However, in COVID-19, our vendor who managed the visual inspection had staffing issues. And frankly, we didn't get our last video until sometime in August. That video then has to go through an inspection process to determine the condition of the pipes. And we really, so we didn't have that done until probably early October. So in that particular instance, we lost the months, but it mostly was COVID-19 related. My presentation also went on though that in 2020, we have thus far replaced 583 linear feet of pipe. That was in Southport, Colarney, the Edinburgh-Edinburgh intersection, and in Huntsville. Our primary vendor for that work was Long Hill Escavating, who was the lowest bidder of the three bids we saw. So we went after three bids, we took the lowest bidder. Again, that, as I stated in my presentation, we spent in 2020 thus far, because we still have several months to go, $331,085 for the work that's done. So we did do work in 2020. We lost time because of COVID-19 and that's about it. We're ready to now move forward. So I have several questions here on expenses and expense control that were submitted by the same person. We'll go ahead and try and take them as they come. "What actions are underway to look at reducing expenses? As an example, I believe that the Forts Colony insurance provider has been the same for 20 years, have we investigated other options?" The answer to that is yes. Last year, we did look at other insurance providers and brokers and came back where we, I think we changed carriers in one or two lines of insurance, but we constantly look at that. And so it's not necessarily new. Because we've had somebody for 20 years, doesn't mean they become the most expensive. As you know, it's our fiduciary duty to go ahead and investigate these things from time to time and make sure we're still getting the best prices. "Have we considered outsourcing some of the lawn maintenance to external vendors to reduce costs?" We have looked at it. I don't think we like it. I think we like being in charge of ourselves. You know, on a bigger scale, it's the same thing when you came and we were looking at the management agent contract. It became quite clear that if we were willing to give up our standards and go to somebody else's standards, we could perhaps save money. You flip that around, and the whole also holds true in landscaping. We have very detailed landscaping, I wouldn't say plans, but landscaping guidelines and standards. And we like, and we feel that we're best served by having the arrangement that we currently have to get that done. I would also say that there are other, there are sub-HOAs around us who do use outside landscaping. And when we've looked at the comparison prices of what they're paying and what we would pay for the same thing, we're very comfortable that we are paying equal or less. So I think that right now, we're very comfortable where we are. "Based on discussion with the technical committee, there seems to be opportunities to reduce Cox networking costs. What is the status of this effort?" Again, if you go to my presentation, when I talk about the items that are in the budget for 2021, there is a project for network and security revamping. That is the project that will also look at the charges and how best to manage the outside provider Cox. So that is currently in progress. "Have we published a summary of major assets that are under the Capital Reserve Replacement Referrations Plan?" I have trouble with this one because I don't understand exactly what, and I will go back to the person who wrote this, what's major? You know, capital, the items that we look at Capital Reserve have a unit cost of $5,000 or greater. So that makes it major. Now, if you're looking at major equipment like tractors, trailers, like, yep, we have a list and we manage that. But we also have buildings and that would be considered major. So I need to have a better understanding here of what perhaps this person's looking forward to. "Is it possible going forward that the manager of the major expense areas are instructed to look for ways to reduce costs by 5%?" I would tell you that in the 2019 budget was actually a zero-based budget. And we pushed all the departments to get down as close to 5% savings as they possibly could. When we get to close to 5%, though, we start looking at labor charges. And the labor charges that we incur are all based on standards of service that we've prescribed for Forts Colony. Those reviews are ongoing every year. Do we change any of those standard services, which would then allow us to make some changes within, in the labor market? This budget year, we told the committees that we would not consider any extraordinary expense that was not critical to Forts Colony. In other words, we would only look at things that if we didn't do, the health, safety, and welfare of our residents would be impacted. And so this budget, this budget year, that's how we approached that. I would say that I think that in the last year or two, that we've done an excellent job in expense control. If you get, if you go back to my presentation, we show that we are currently running significantly under budget in expenses and a little bit above budget in revenue for which we will have some type of excess by the end of the year. One thing I was going to wait to the end, but I might as well say it now. The board's work session had a long discussion on the amount of money that we potentially will have in excess of this year because of savings done by the budget. Now, I talk about, the savings are basically because COVID-19 changed everything. We all talk about it. Everybody want to know, are you saving money? Well, of course we are. Our major expense committees looked at their budgets. They decided what they actually needed. They cut when it was appropriate. Our managing agent and his staff and departments did an excellent job. And so we have been saving money all year. We're looking at that now and Thursday, we'll probably announce a change to our annual dues that were in my presentation and take them down. Not necessarily, not significantly where you're looking at 10, 20, 30, 40, but we will take them down to apply some of the excess expense that we anticipate receiving and applying them against the annual dues. Next question was, "Is the $50 per quarter special assessment for pipes in 2021 in addition to the current hundred or replacement?" And I think, I think I covered the presentation, but to be clear again, that's a replacement. The $100 special assessment was for 2020. The $50 is for 2021. We received several questions on, which wasn't my presentation, on the RV park. First question is, "How did the HOA fund the recent improvements in the storage area and what was the cost to do so?" All right, so it was funded from several different areas. When we bought parcels A, B, and C, this is before I was on the board, but you should recall, special assessment three years ago, four years ago, that purchased these lands, there was $35,000 of that was devoted to improvement of the area. So there was $35,000. The remaining $40,000, we put into the 2020 budget. So that was basically $75,000. And the fence was also budgeted in the reserve model for another $30,000. So we spent with fence and improvement, $105,000, $35 from the special assessment that bought the parcels and the remaining from our investment funds. "What is the projected 2021 annual revenue that will be collected from residents to utilize this storage? And how does this compare to the annual revenue that we've collected in 2021?" We budgeted in revenue, $42,900 of revenue for 2021. In 2020, $24,200 was budgeted. Next question to that was, "What percentage of the collected rental fees in 2021?" Next question to that was, what percentage of the collected rental fees in 2021 are, are going to be allocated to a special reserve fund earmarked for future improvements to the storage area? None. This is going to be treated like any other revenue we have and go into our general revenue fund. We do the same for security gate cards and, and talk of the colony revenues. It all goes into, into our general revenue fund. And we use that to offset expenses and that's drive resident dues. So all residents take, you know, take, or take in the gain of, of a potential revenue. The last question that I have here is, please explain the costs associated with the nature trail construction that took place prior to being damaged by the floodwaters. The new costs associated with reconstruction's asset and what will the timeline be, be needed? In 2019, we had $28,820 for this. In 2020, we, we budgeted and spent $10,250. And that is finally a decision in 2019 to take this into, as, into an asset of Forts Colony and maintain it going into the future. As far as the timeline for when, when, when we're going to complete the, the repairs, I'm going to have to be a little vague on that because to save money on the repairs, we do this with staff when, when we don't have them tied up doing other duties. So when it gets to be winter time, we're not cutting the grass as much, but we need weather for, for, for people, you know, to be, allow them to go out there and work. So the timeline, we're going to try and get it done over the winter and the spring, but we're not going to commit to an actual date to have it done. Drew, Bob, this concludes the questions that I have. Do we have any more?
Muted Drew.
We do have a couple more questions that have come in. The first one, we'd be happy to assist with if necessary. But the question is regarding the healthcare expenses that you were talking about earlier. Are we, are, is the FCHOA receiving a summary of the types of healthcare claims that come in?
I'm writing this down so that he's... Drew, I don't, I don't see the claims. Do you see the claims?
We, we do as, I'd like to explain to the, to the folks, the question in particular, that the, that the employees are employees of Real Tech Community Services, the management agent. And on those type of expenses, we have a pass-through agreement as part of the contracts. So the FCHOA does pay all those healthcare expenses. But we as a company, we receive a summary of, or claims experiences, perhaps a better way to say it, without a detailed report on particular people. We do not share that with the board. It's simply our contract employees. This is what our health experience is in, in prior years. And this is what our cost is going forward for the, for the next year. A second question was something that we could certainly follow up with. Sally Walls has already contacted that question, but regarding the $600,000 anticipated being raised in the special assessment for 2021, and asking for perhaps a more simplified explanation, if our costs are only going up an extra $200,000, why do we need the $600,000 in the special assessment? So I would suggest, Ray, that, that, that you just take a step back and, and break that down a little bit on the original cost of over $3 million. And what was, what of that was funded by the first special assessment? The gap plus the extra $200,000.
All right, that was really, I think, the second question that I, that I covered. So let me try it another way if, if I didn't, if I wasn't clear. The, the $200,000 increase really doesn't necessarily tie into the special, second special assessment. What it ties into is that we fully inspected all of our pipes. We did the remaining 59% and found the project was larger. And it was, and it's larger from the 3.15 to 3.4. All right, so, so put that aside. The inspections developed that we have more pipe that needs to be repaired or replaced of a critical nature. And by that, we mean that the pipe is, is, is close to failure. What we had planned to do, which we announced last, last year, we were going, taking the first special assessment. And that which we didn't use to inspect the pipes, we were going to be used against the critical pipes that were, that were close, that were close to failure. I mean, we've been consistent in that, that we, we need to address in the short term, the pipes that were, were close to costing us more money if they failed. With the number of pipes increasing that needed to be, that became categorized as critical, the amount that we had carried over from the first special assessment wasn't enough. And remember, I said the first special assessment and the second assess, special assessment, well, total, only one point, total $1.8 million. And again, that's $1.8 million against a project cost of 3.4. We have a, a project in place to handle the critical pipes that is going to cost us 1.9... 1.99... Oh, let me get that number right so I don't screw it up. Yeah, I'm sorry. 1.99 million is, is the critical to replace or repair the critical pipes. That's greater than the sum of the two successful assessments by a little bit, plus the fact that we've spent some money off of, off of the special assessment. So from the, from the first special assessment of the 1.195, we have a carryover of roughly $809,000. So we're going to use the $809,000. We're going to use the money that you've, you've given us in the special assessment. And then we're going to use our savings to pay for the critical, critical pipes. And that is on, I mean, the breakout of that is on page, page 24, if you will, of, of my presentation. So if, if, if you looked at that, you would see that to cover the 1.990, it's $809,541 left over from the 2020 special assessment. It's 135, 134,129 that we're taking from our 2021 savings. We're borrowing $449,071 from ourselves. And we've asked you for a special assessment of 590, which gives us 597,600. That gets us to the 1,900,000. So the $200,000 increase between having only 41% of, of our pipes inspected and having 100% of the pipes inspected, doesn't enter into the calculation of, you know, 200,000, into what we needed for a special assessment. What is driving the special assessment is the amount of pipes that are deemed critical that need to be repaired or replaced now. All right, Drew?
Thank you. The, the next question regards the $75,000 projected surplus. What is the plan to utilize this surplus?
Give me a second here. I don't think that I said that we had a $75,000 surplus in my presentation. I think my presentation said, I'm sorry, I anticipated a year and year of $75,000. The... We are planning, we are planning the... I'm sorry, somebody's talking over? I heard something else come in, okay. This, of the $75,000, the... We're not at the end of the year. And so there has been, there is reluctance until we finish the year to basically make a firm and fast decision. If you, if we have had discussions on taking part of this money and returning it, as I mentioned earlier, return it, returning it to residents in the form of reducing the, the $12 increase of our, of our annual dues. The other part, we've had discussions of either carrying it over or putting it against the, the CIF fund, the improvement fund. Haven't made any firm decisions. We'll wait to see the resident, of, of, what to see, what, what the resolution says and what, how people vote. But right now, those are the leading contenders. Putting it, putting it against our dues to reduce the, the dues of our, of our residents and funding the CIF fund.
Thank you. The next question goes back to healthcare costs. And the question is, are, are the employees somewhat responsible for contributing to these increased expenses? That refers to the, the fact that we do split our healthcare costs with our employees.
I, I'm going to have to, again, I, I don't have the health plan in, in front of me. The health plan though, is a contributory plan. And when we, when we get, imagine when you, when you receive what the premiums are going to be from your provider, you decide how that split goes.
That, that, that's correct. We, we, we do have participatory plan. So the employees' costs increases as does the homeowners association's cost increases.
I, I would like to just interject one point. The, the board recognizes that we, we, we believe that, that offering our employees, especially the employees that are in the landscaping business or some of the low-paid people in security and such, giving them the option to have healthcare is a differentiator in recruiting and retention. These are, these are benefits that they made in, in similar, in similar paying jobs may not be offered. And we use this actually as an inducement to, for employment.
That, that's correct. We also have several competitors that offer 100% paid healthcare. So it's kind of, it's kind of a mixed bag out there in the, in the market. And the next question, Ray, is, would you review the, the, the grants that are provided periodically, annually? In fact, you know, the competitive grants that James City County considers and what we were able to procure for this year?
Again, I actually, in the presentation, I did mention the grants on page... Page 20. We, we mentioned last year in the, during our price presentation, we had filed for $130,000 worth of grants with James City County. We actually received $133,490 from grants. We are actually, we are in the process of filing for more grants. We're putting requests for grants for inspections of the order, underwater pipes and, and for various drainage things. So we always are applying for grants. But we did, did receive $133,490 from, from James City County last year, or this year, from our last year filings.
If I may, I'll, I'll give a shout out to our project maintenance manager, Ryan Lee. We were actually on tap for about 50% of the grants that we actually did receive. But probably due to COVID and other considerations, other homeowners associations were not able to line up for the grant money that was available. James City County reached out and Ryan Lee, within 24 hours, was able to get an additional, nearly 50% of that amount of money was applied for within 24 hours with three bids for each particular grant. So we, we are very grateful for Ryan to have shovel, shovel-ready projects ready to go like that, be able to submit it on a timely basis like that. Mr. Treasurer, I, that's the, that's the list of my questions that I have so far. Again, we welcome folks to hit their chat button, ask us a question. We are very grateful for the number of questions that we've already received. If you need to pick up a telephone, you can always call us at 258-4230. We're only 45 minutes into this webinar, we'd be happy to hang in for a little while longer.
And just to repeat, we will be sending out to the individuals who ask these questions, answers via email, because I said, I did consolidate a few things where, which seem to be repetitive in, in nature in the questions. So we will, we will respond directly to each questioner.
We're also recording this webinar and we'll be able to make this recording available later once we, once we have a chance to post it on our website. So the, we really think it's been a comprehensive budget presentation this season where the treasurer made the presentation on the YouTube video that, that folks had a chance to see in advance as well as answer questions tonight. So certainly both products available on the website is a great service to, to the membership. Give a couple, another minute or so for, for new questions to come in.
All right.
We had a compliment come in, said, "Great job, thank you very much." We appreciate that. Couple of them coming in saying that, "Great job, Mr. Treasurer, thank you very much."
Well, thank you.
And let me jump in, Drew, this is Bob Moeller. I want to echo those comments that we got from some of our resident members, some of our members, because I think Ray's done an excellent job. And I thank him for all his hard work, not only in the presentation, but answering the questions tonight. He's done a masterful job. And like you said, we'll be answering some of the questions and the email, just to reinforce it. And if you have questions, go ahead and send them in. And if we don't answer them tonight, we will certainly answer them by email. And I don't know how much longer you want to hang in there. Have you gotten any more in the interim, Drew?
No, we're, we're just getting a lot of very gracious compliments from our members. We're, we're, we thank you very much for that, thank you.
Yeah. So no use keeping everybody up.
Looks like we could wrap it up, thank you very much.
I think so. And just again...
Ray, you have any closing comments you'd like to make?
No, I, I just like to say I do appreciate everyone's attention. This is, this is not an easy thing to do. And, and I had, I had an awful lot of help, you know. Sally Walls, Drew, the finance committee, and my fellow board members, you know, it took, this took an awful lot of time and effort to, to put on. And I certainly did appreciate everything they did to support me in this. So thank you all, I appreciate it.
Yeah, if I, if I could make a shout out to our, our staff. I wanted to say thank you to Sally Walls in particular for setting up this webinar and all the work that she does in supporting the finance committee and the board. But I also wanted to acknowledge our managerial staff and some other key employees that are with us this evening, spending time with us to, to make this webinar available to the community. I want to say thank you to them very much.
Yeah. I know, I saw Amanda Buckley, Dan Collin, Audrey Miller, Sally Walls. Ryan Lee was back there covering it, so, and thanks to you, Drew. This has been, as I said at the start, you know, your patience is, is welcome. This is an unusual time that we're in. And this is one way that we thought was, would work to try and get the word out and present everything and give everybody a chance to talk and, or at least ask questions and receive the questions that we typically would. And we're going to experience a similar kind of a situation. We have the annual meeting. I tell everybody that, I don't think Lafayette High School is ready to accept, you know, people from Forts Colony to come in and sit in their auditorium. And once again, we're going to be limited in how many we could have in the S and T. So we're probably going to look at something very similar. So if you have comments about how this went and, and ideas of how to make it better, you know, without having to go into a TV studio and do a live streaming TV. But if you have comments, we certainly welcome them because this is a learning process that we hope, given the news from Pfizer, that maybe we'll have a light tunnel and it's not the train coming at us. So, thank you. And with that being no more, I want to adjourn our meeting and thank everyone for your patience and for... and for tuning in and for all 380 of you that looked at the, the YouTube video. Thank you, thanks again to Ray for a great job.
And thank you, and thank you, Mr. Treasurer, Mr. President. And Bob, you said happy Veterans Day to all our veterans out there tomorrow. I'd also like to extend a happy birthday to our Marine Corps brothers and sisters and their families. Happy birthday today. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.